Good evening. I'm Jim Rettner, that name next to me is Jim R. O'Toole. And I am an architect and a volunteer for the state of Oregon. Our work has gone out in one line this date, and it forces the next one to apply life education. That's what we're here for tonight, is to talk about the conservation pavilion. And also take the effort to do, to drive by, to make that happen in spring and fall. Standing there, thirty, forty, fifty school buses in a lot. And needs to be added every three, one to two thousand students in the zoo. And keep their attention, when you see them at an exhibit, you know, something else is going to have to take a different direction. So the idea of having this pavilion that seats five hundred students, you can have their retention, the retention, you can grab them, you can be able to bring out these particular, whatever they are, animals, and actually educate the students about what these aims are, what the purposes are, and how we can help them in the wildlife and around the world. A good example of what's going on right now is what's happening in Australia with the wildlife. People wonder what zoos are out there for, what the conservation groups are out there for. This is where we've become to play, where we can help repopulate an area that's devastated like it has in Australia. And one of the other things that people haven't brought up yet with Australia, is that even with the species that do survive, the fires, the fireworks going on, the genetics that produce breeds or species are going to be depleted. So zoos can help in bringing back or reintroducing different genetics back into the wildlife. Okay? This will help in this particular case in Australia. But if we can get five hundred students to sit still for thirty minutes, whatever it is, and concentrate on what we've presented today, this is a big plus. So just having a working zoo, just having them stand in one place, and if the animal happens to be in view, they'll sit there and they may ask questions. If the animal's not there, they're going to move on quickly to their exhibit. All right? So I happen to have worked at Turtleback Zoo back in the seventies, five, six years, and what it has become today is incredible. It's a joy to be back here. Thank you.
Just as a reminder for those who are participating in the public comment, please make sure to direct your comments to the microphone as we are recording this amazing public session.
Vicki Parker, South Plains, New Jersey. Like Jim, I also worked here at the zoo in the seventies, and it was a much different place than it is now. Now I stand here as a docent and an advocate for conservation. The idea of introducing the public in an informal setting to the subject of conservation is a very new idea in the zoo world. To quote the ACA's mission statement, ACA helps its members and the animals in the care thrive by providing services, advancing animal welfare, public engagement, and the conservation of wildlife. ACA accredited facilities like Turtleback Zoo raise awareness about conservation issues and promote action that visitors can take to help save wildlife and wild places. ACA programs, like the ones that will be given in the conservation pavilion that we hope to build, have reached over sixty-one million dollars, million people in the zoo world. Our zoo education program reaches only a small portion of the children who visit the zoo. Only some of the children in school groups that come have the opportunity to see a conservation program while they're there. We have a unique opportunity to teach people and the next generation about man's impact on animals and the plants that we share our planet with. The conservation pavilion will give us the ability to reach larger groups than our docents or our current education programs currently reach. This will enable the zoo to talk to people about these very crucial issues and the changes that they can make in their lives to help them. Having a respected, state-of-the-art facility like the proposed pavilion would be a shining light for the future generations in our society. Thank you.
Richard Inserro, I-N-S-E-R-R-O, Maplewood, New Jersey. I'm a member of the South Mountain Conservancy Board of Trustees. For those not familiar with the Conservancy, we are the only nonprofit organization dedicated to protecting the South Mountain Reservation. You can find more information about us at selmacan.org. In our view, the core issue is not the zoo itself or the pavilion, it's how to best manage the overwhelming success of all the attractions situated in the zoo, especially in the area of that part of the reservation, and the impact to the reservation overall in terms of community. In the past, the Conservancy has supported much of the expansion, and we're thankful for the partnership between the Conservancy and Essex County on the challenges facing our incredible natural resource, and we look forward to continuing this partnership. Nevertheless, as we debated zoo expansion, we looked at our mission, which states in part, working to protect, restore, and enhance the ecology, natural beauty, and infrastructure through sustainable use, informed public policy, and public education engagement. The zoo master plan indicates a desire to develop new exhibits and grow. On page nine of the plan, it indicates ten projects to occur over ten years. It contemplates potential thirty percent attendance growth to one point two million visitors. It indicates more parking is needed, and what is even noted in the plan looks like it may not be enough. Approximately three acres of reservation land has already been taken for overflow parking. The desire to actively exhibit looks like from the plan it may take another five acres. With a thirty-three percent increase in zoo attendance contemplated, there's legitimate concern for the local community about traffic and quality of life. When the zoo was formed in nineteen sixty-three, our understanding is the boundaries were never set. Does that mean more acres will be taken in the future? It seems unlimited, potentially, not suggesting that to happen. The master plan comments about the zoo moving into the top tiers of zoos nationally. San Diego Zoo is a hundred acres, the Bronx Zoo is two hundred and sixty-five. Seeing all of these changes collectively, in our view, that's too much expansion without further study of community impact. To be clear, we are not against the zoo. Members of our board go to it and participate in events there. Our detailed recommendations are on our website, three in particular. We respectfully ask to suspend any zoo expansion until a comprehensive and independent traffic study is done. We would like more investments in the ecology of the reservation, and we would like clear and transparent information about costs for the entire master plan. Thank you.
Hi, Adam Carron. Six, Eli Goldstein.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jane Jellin. I'm also a board of the South Mountain Conservancy. What the county does not want to talk about today is the master plan. What will this master plan cost? A close reading demonstrates that the master plan will lead to the death of our beloved reservation. We are so lucky to have this reservation in our midst. It is rare in a community that is very developed and are in happiness. But when we talk about Turtleback Zoo becoming in the top tier of zoos, what does that mean? It means more congestion. It means, as we said, ten projects over ten years. How much will this cost? Nobody, nowhere in the master plan, we don't know. Where will the money come from? How much more land will they take from the South Mountain Reservation? All the while, this money is being devoted to the zoo. The reservation is suffering terribly. Over the last, I have lived in this community for forty years. I have watched it deteriorate. I have watched less and less money being devoted to maintenance. And the excuse we're being given when they cut back on the maintenance budget, we don't have the money. Where is the money coming from the zoo? Why isn't it being devoted to the reservation? We see the culverts in the reservation flooding. The erosion is terrible. The invasive species are taking over this reservation. The maintenance budget is not there. We are asking the county to have a devoted budget for the South Mountain Reservation so we could preserve this beautiful gem that we have in our midst. Calling it a conservation pavilion doesn't make it for conservation. It wouldn't. We completely conserve this rare jewel of ours. Thank you.
I'm the executive director of the Zoological Society of New Jersey. I'm going to speak to a couple things, conservation being one of them because it's one of my passions. For forty-five years, the Zoological Society of New Jersey has supported Essex County Turtleback Zoo. We are proud of the many milestones we have achieved together, but perhaps are most proud of our strength and commitment to conservation. Through our partnership, we have spent over seven hundred thousand dollars on conservation initiatives over the last five years, with an additional two hundred thousand in budget this year. We mentioned Australia earlier. We just launched a twenty-five thousand dollar nature campaign, so that we're going to donate back to Australian wildlife warriors. We have sent keepers and medical staff to assist wild populations. We support on-ground wildlife rehabilitation. We raise money for specific species at in-park events. We operate Zoo Tune Go, which recruits volunteer support for outside park cleanups, including the Conservancy, and we donate to conservation causes both locally and abroad. This would not be possible without the education, inspiration, and funding sourced from the zoo itself. We commend Essex County on its strength and commitment to wildlife, and we are in favor of all projects meant to inspire future generations of conservators. Thank you.
Eli Goldstein, resident of South Orange, architect with an office in Maplewood. I've lived in Essex County and South Orange and West Orange for more than fifty years and have used the reservation intensely. My wife and I walk there when there's enough snow. I ski there, I run there. It's a great jewel, and I'm concerned about this project, both as a resident and as an architect. My concerns as an architect are that putting a white roof on it doesn't make it an energy-efficient and energy-conservative building. There was some mention of the fact that there's going to be a detention, detention basin in the loss of many trees, partly to create that basin, where if the building had a vegetated roof and pervious pavement, both for the new street that's going to be used for employee vehicles, and also for the seating area for the public and the students, there would be no need for a detention basin. Therefore, you could keep more of the trees, and you could use the building itself as an exemplar of wild, of conservation of natural resources, as well as illustrating to the students the conservation of wildlife. So I think that a lot more thought needs to go into the design of the building in order to make it as, have as gentle an impact as possible on the reservation, so that as much of the character of the reservation is preserved. Thank you.
Eight, Virginia Lamb Falconer. Nine, Jane Conrad.
Robert, R-A-S-H-K-D-S, address thirty-five Oak Crest Road, West Orange, New Jersey. I want to thank the passion to hold in the public meeting. I am here because this project has the potential to adversely affect my policy of life more than it already has, because I can hear the noise and I can see the lights of the zoo from my neighborhood. Residents should have a say in where trees should be replanted. I would like to see other green trees be planted between Oak Crest Road and the zoo to provide more buffer between my neighborhood and the zoo. I also note that the new Turtleback Zoo entrance is very brightly lit and can be seen from the reservation going east on North Hill Avenue, west of Cherry Lane, which doesn't maintain the homestead character of the reservation. I would like to see the county engage the surrounding community before seeking grants from the state of New Jersey budget, as this is a controversial project. I would like to see the county put out the new master plan for public comment and pre-holder approval. I would like to see the zoo master plan be consistent with the new West Orange master plan update. I would like to see the county provide pedestrian access for the neighborhoods west of the zoo near the JCC, as stated in the new twenty-twenty West Orange Master Plan update. Thank you.
Virginia Lamb Falconer, F-A-L-C-O-N-D-R, Three Wind Park Place in Maplewood. I'm a Maplewood resident and environmental educator, a new member of the South Mountain Conservancy, and a frequent visitor to the zoo and to the reservation. I'm not opposed to the zoo or to zoos in general. I think the zoo complex has a lot of positive features, and I've enjoyed visiting there many times over the years and seeing it transform. From a place where there were close encages when I first moved to Maplewood, what I wonder is why the zoo has to keep expanding with no end in sight? Why it has to keep continuing, continuing to approach into the South Mountain Reservation? Turtleback Zoo has expanded fifty percent from twenty to thirty acres since two thousand eight. By contrast, the reservation has expanded by fifty acres or two point three percent. In addition to a proposed conservation pavilion, the necessity and efficacy of which I question, the draft master plan calls for nine hundred additional parking places, rerouted train tracks, a new tropics building to replace the reptile house, a state-of-the-art cafe on the southern campus, which is referred to as poised to be at the forefront of design and activity. This is all woods now. I wonder what impacts this will have on the Orange Reservoir. We are poised to leave valuable and irreplaceable natural areas, areas that are of high value as carbon sinks to address global warming, as habitats, as water management areas, as oxygen producers, air purifiers, and as free passive recreation. It is said that the zoo is for all residents, but activities at the complex are expensive, and not all have access, unlike to the woods, which thousands of people visit for free weekly. The South Mountain Reservation is under a lot of pressure as an urban forest. It is degraded, is in a degraded state due to exploitation and a lack of management. Soils are compacted and rotted, and there seems to be an excessive amount of tree debris on the forest floor, making conditions ripe for fire, especially in our rapidly warming climate. It has been stated that the three accrediting organizations are requiring educational upgrades, and I wonder where the public can find details on those requirements. It has also been stated that the zoo has no defined boundaries, and I fear one day it may expand all the way to South Orange, hasn't it? I would request that the county clearly define the ultimate limits of the zoo complex. Put resources into actively and appropriately managing the reservation as a valuable urban forest that it is. These woods are gifts to us all, available to everyone. Utilize the natural forest itself as an interactive educational environment, cultivating understanding and appreciation of natural spaces to our youth. And above all, to prioritize the conservation and regeneration of this vital natural resource. Thank you.
I'm at thirty-five Roosevelt Road in Maplewood. And I worked for ten years teaching gardening and environmental education at a Title I elementary school where my kids were attending, Seth Woodin Elementary in Maplewood. During that time, we won two national awards for organic gardening and for environmental education. What I'm going to say is that Turtleback Zoo is a charming, small zoo with wonderful staff and dedicated educators. The zoo's location in the largest nature preserve in Essex County does confer special responsibility to be an advocate and an example for conservation. However, I oppose the proposed five hundred seat amphitheater for two main reasons. Number one, it is out of scale with the zoo's charming size. And number two, a facility of this size is not an effective venue to get kids interested Five hundred, five hundred seats represents the entire population of an elementary school in this region. I don't know how many school assemblies you have attended, but this size is not an effective A little box turtle or bird down on the stage won't be seen. At best, a movie or lecture in such a venue promotes a passive form of entertainment, which kids could just as easily experience back in their school auditorium. In my experience, the real way kids get interested in nature and conservation is by doing hands-on activities in small groups. And I feel that there is a wonderful opportunity right at your doorstep, and a better way to spend those eight million dollars. Use Orange Reservoir as a habitat and outdoor amphitheater. Use that money to restore the zoo's lake, Orange Reservoir, both in terms of water quality and as a healthy living habitat for the fish, amphibians, reptiles, birds, and insect species that inhabit the reservation. Make the lake your outdoor amphitheater, your focus of conservation and education programs. Use that money to develop programs and hire natural educators and student interns who can lead small groups of kids in meaningful, hands-on conservation activities. The lake as a focus offers unlimited educational opportunities, which I would like to, I elaborated on these in a letter, which I would love to give to you and to Mr. DiVincenzo. So, thank you.
Eleven, Bill Byrne. Twelve, Lisa Goldstein.
Jonathan Poor, Maplewood, S-T-O-O-R. Maplewood Environmental Committee member, South Mountain Conservancy member. And again, I like zoos. We recently visited Turtleback Zoo and found it, you know, great, a small, kid-friendly I like the choice of animals that are a little appealing to smaller children, flamingos and penguins, et cetera. Couple of comments about my visit there recently, though I think, you know, talking about conservation, the landscaping between the exhibits needs to be more focused on creating habitat for local species. You've got some areas that look like kind of gas station, I think, of landscaping, sort of grass and sort of chopped, you know, bush haircut or ornamental grasses. You could do a lot just of vegetation just by providing habitat for local birds, hydrotor species, and so on. Another comment is that the three largest buildings in your complex are parking garages. I mean, it's kind of a car zoo in some sense. People in Maplewood know me as someone who gets around by bicycle. I didn't ride my bike all the way up here today, but I've been by here a lot, so I know, I know this is the other end of Essex County. One thing that you could do to help promote an idea of, you know, where we're going as a country in terms of addressing climate issues, you could make it more bike-friendly to get there. Brookside Avenue is, I mean, on Sundays it closes from the southern part below the South Orange Avenue, but you could extend that up to the zoo and have families riding up to the zoo. Northfield Avenue is kind of a horrible place to ride a bike right now, and it could be easily remedied by putting shoulder stripes on Northfield Avenue, just like enough space for bikes to go off and down Northfield Avenue. And in fact, you could widen the shoulder stripes on Brookside to make it more accessible. Okay, one more comment, it's just building on what Jane was saying. The runoff from these developments needs, you need more than just a couple of, you know, ten, fifteen feet of mulch. You need, I think I've heard, you know, mentioning the design, it's got rain guards put in, but you need more of those. You need to catch a lot of this runoff before it gets to the lake. If you look at Google Maps right now, the picture that it got of Orange Reservoir shows summer scene of, the margin on the north end of the reservoir are clearly greenish, and if you don't watch out, it's going to get to the dreaded blue-green algae in there. So again, let's spend the money to try to restore the environment of Orange Reservoir. Thank you.
My name is Bill Beren, B-E-R-E-N. I'm a resident of Montclair, and I'm also on the executive committee of the gateway chapter of the New Jersey CR Club, which represents two thousand plus members of the club that reside in Essex County. In theory, the CR Club and the zoo should be partners, or we are partners. We have common goals, common aims to educate people about conservation and species extinction, global warming, and other issues that the zoo is addressing and wants to address with this conservation pavilion. Our concerns, as with the other members who've spoken here today, other residents who've spoken here today, is the impact it's having on the park, the lack of a master plan in the park, the lack of any overall sense of how the park and the zoo are going to interact. The chapter did pass a resolution opposing the pavilion, and we hold that position tonight for many of the reasons that have been said now, aren't people? We hope that the county will rethink its goals here, rethink its plans here, and develop some of the more interactive ways of reaching schoolchildren than a pavilion. I just want to comment on some of the opening statements that were made by the county, particularly the opening statement that the county has added, something like fifty acres of parkland, open space. The specific sites that were mentioned were all existing county parks, local parks that the county took over. There was no expansion of open space. So that was kind of the thing. The map here, the The map here, the picture here is taken in the winter, there's no leaf cover, you can't see what's being destroyed. The pavilion is a little star, it's not showing the outline of where the pavilion is going to cover, so all of these things are really missing. And, you know, I'd just like to say, if you think about, if you build the pavilion...
Thirty seconds.
Right. If you build a pavilion, if you hope you don't, how about putting solar on the roof instead of the white space? And, you know, a lot of people's talked about traffic and access, there's no public transit to the zoo. And the county really needs to work with the bus companies and the other transportation agencies to develop some form of public transit so that we're not all taking cars. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to address two of the issues that were raised by the gentleman. The first is that he mentioned that the properties that were mentioned in the comments were not a preservation of open space. However, the majority of those that I mentioned were purchased using primary tax dollars, which preserved them as open space for generations. An example of which would be Cedar Grove Park, which was slated for redevelopment. There's an ongoing battle about how we would preserve that as open space. I just wanted to clarify that there was no misinformation. And second, the notion that the zoo is not accessible by its public transportation. For those who are familiar with the complex, there is a PRI, it's accessible by several different box transportation companies. And while we would welcome additional public transportation to the zoo, the site is available via public transportation.
Teresa Goldstein. Good evening, I'm Teresa Goldstein, I live in South Orange, New Jersey, and I just do want to say I may be the only person in this room who went to St. Cloud School, who went to Starry, went to Churbat Zoo, was built, and I got a ride on a turtle. Because they had big ones and they were small enough. But that said, what I, the questions I want to ask and the comments I want to make are not meant to be amusing at all. My husband was the architect and planner who spoke earlier, and a partner in the St. Cloud. When he speaks of vegetated roofs, let me add that what he's talking about is a green roof, instead of a white membrane, a green roofing, one where flowers grow, grasses grow, and if you're going to be sustainable, I would offer that when you take away pervious surface, replace it with pervious surface to the best of your ability, and a green or vegetated roof will accomplish that. And I would urge you, if this must be built, to make that change. I'm also interested in how many months out of the year this facility would be used as an outdoor facility to take an acre and a half of reservation for something that cannot be used year-round. Troubled, please. It would seem that it would only be used for a very limited amount of time, and I'd find that far from the highest investments of this pristine acreage. I'm also interested in the height of this, I have not been that mentioned, I'm wondering from how far we can see this. I agree that the parking zoo is the main landmark of our town or of this area now, which is very sad, but if this is going to add to the visual clutter that, you know, that we can see from very far away, I'd like to know that too. Let me see. Last, another question, was there any effort whatsoever to cite this within the existing zoo boundaries? I heard no mention of that at all and I don't understand why. That seemed to be something that would back up your reasoning for needing this extra acreage. But here's a bigger issue, we're all talking about the master plan of the zoo. To me, that means there is no overall master plan of the reservation itself, and without an overall master plan of the entire South Mountain Reservation, I'm very troubled by the fact that nothing is limited, these little scoops we keep on taking that are further described in the master plan. I would urge you to, before any of this can go ahead, to create an overall master plan that can be voted on or heard by, you know, we can be heard by all the citizens of the county or those who are interested, to vote on the master plan and understand what the overall development goals, not just for the zoo, but for the entire county are. And last, I couldn't agree more with what Roosevelt Road preceded me about the beautiful natural environment we have here and what a wonderful comment to make about how better served our kids would be to look at the turtles on the rocks in the pond and all of those things, who's created those paths, let's use that instead.
Just to answer two of the speakers' questions that you raised, we anticipate that the conservation pavilion will be provided program nine to 10 months of the year. And we did look at the infrastructure of the zoo and we were unable to cite this building and its site within the zoo boundary.
13 Ruth Carl Mutter. 14 Katherine Jamasi. 15 Karen Sanders.
My name is Ruth Carl Mutter, I live in Maplewood, New Jersey, oh, seven oh four, I'm used to hearing all that. I just wondered if there's, by me, been a feasibility, lighting feasibility study? Because when I go up and down Northfield Avenue, it looks like the skyline of New York City. And it has to, it has to impact the animals. It has to impact, I don't know what these zoo animals feel of it, I know it impacts the residents around there, but it also impacts our own wild animals in our own reservation, which was designed by a very famous architect, Olmsted, right? So it's driving animals out of the reservation into people's backyards, foxes, coyotes, all of that. So that's really all I wanted to ask, if there was a feasibility study because the lights, we all know that even in Arizona in hotels, they keep the lights down in respect for those animals that live there, it completely disorients our own, we have our own wildlife that's left of it in the reservation, not too much left. So that's it. The other question I wanted to know was, what kinds of animals you would use for display to a big audience because a lot of crowds, a lot of kids can terrify animals. So that's it.
And I can answer both of your questions. At this time, we have not conducted an entire lighting study of all of Northfield Avenue or the entire complex, but for this project, we do have a lighting engineer who's coming to review the lighting impact specifics for this development. And so we had a second question regarding the animals that are part of our animal and outdoor program. The exact makeup of what animals will participate in that program has yet to be developed, but a number of the animals who will participate are already on ground and participating in education programs. And there's a variety of mammals, reptiles, as well as birds participating.
Good evening, my name is Hector Tabasek, I'm a grown-up resident for the past 40 years. And over the time I've lived in Essex County, I've seen the zoo develop, as was described before, from a very small, quiet facility to a very large, noisome, and obvious facility that it is now. My concerns, many of which have been addressed already, are a couple of others. Your information states that your goal is to reach 45% of the student visitors to engage with a program of this conservation pavilion. Well, I'm wondering, when is enough enough? 45% of the students, how many years from now will you decide that you need to reach 85% of the students and then perhaps need a pavilion twice as large or even 100% of the students who visit? And then what? Are we approaching even further into the reservation? The master plan, as it exists now, seems to give us some idea of where all of this is going. It's a huge encroachment into a reservation. The cost is unknown and we know as Essex County taxpayers that we're the ones that are going to be paying the bonded indebtedness for the next 20, 30, 40 years. I have a concern about removing 135 trees. I haven't been out there to count for myself, but an acre and a half of land, if indeed is 135 trees, that's a lot of trees. Nobody's given any indication of what size these replantings are going to be or where they're going to go. Four to one replanting if they're one or two-inch caliper trees means nothing. Moreover, with climate change and global warming, I think we do need to be much more conscious of every single tree that is removed, especially from a pristine area like the reservation. I agree and I urge that the pre-holders adopt a master plan that will allow all of us to know what the ultimate limits of the zoo project are. I think you have an obligation to the taxpayers that's experienced, but also to your mission as those who govern this county to protect one of the most beautiful resources in the state of New Jersey, which is the South Mountain Reservation.
Thanks to address a few of this speaker's questions. The 540 trees that are planned for planting as part of this project will range in size from around 23 and 1/2 inch calipers as our standard replanting. And this project will have no bonding. I mentioned in my earlier comments, this project will be funded in part by Grand State of New Jersey and the remainder from the county budget.
I'm Karen Magg, I've lived in Maplewood, South Orange, for the last 28 years. The question you just raised is one that I also have. One is enough enough. I mean, I think the thing is that there is absolutely this expansionist sort of feeling that it's never going to stop. And I think that we absolutely need to have, is there any way we can stop this from happening? Is it so far gone? Is this just a token appearance of information? Or is there a possibility that the public will get it wrong? The thing is, is I've been to a lot of people's meetings, often a life of transparency, and I think that we deserve to know what our expectations are or what our input can be because I've spoken at community meetings before and have not had the issues I've raised really listened to, as many of my friends and people that I work with. This, the zoo came back because of community involvement. The community now, much of whom knows about this, the people who do know about this are against this expansion for many of the reasons cited. It's not necessary. I mean, it's like, we're living in a day and age when we're in a climate crisis. The idea of adding more light and more electricity and calling it conservation is antithetical to what conservation will be. We have, the, that's a county that's spent so much money on this amphitheater in the last, you know, just in the last two years. I mean, the park did that, I don't know how much that was. In May 2016, we opened a $7 million giraffe exhibit. June 2017, opened a $3.6 million exhibit. And these speeches aren't even like germane to our environment. And, you know, the Bronx Zoo Prince has a huge amount of space that can better accommodate these wild animals that are now penned in. And we have lost the lion and the giraffe in the last couple of years, they have died. I also wanted to say something about interaction. I mean, you know, a lot of students still buy it now and are being taught about conservation.
Thirty seconds.
It would be really nice if that's when the gossips and people go into schools, you know, and talk about it and show slides instead of having this outdoor, you know, mega exhibit. And I just, I just want to say, some of it sounds like, you know, first zoo, this private zoo, it's sort of like, almost like, why do we need this vanity project of a Churbat Zoo in Essex County? We don't need it. Our kids are already satisfied with what they have and they're making more creative and less cost-effective and landy's effective ways to get kids involved.
16 Daniel Belcher. 17 Beth Boiley. 18 Lauren Savilla.
Sorry about anything, it's on me. My name is Beth Boiley, I'm a resident at Great Union, New Jersey. Been a resident for 26 years. And so I have seen the zoo grow and was it alarmed at first and have become more alarmed. My first point though is the sort of math of it, there's about 143,000 student visitors a year and that matches the total number of New Jersey students in a particular grade every one year. And so it seems like that's the right amount of students. If there's six shows a day and 120 students for 180 days, it seems like that's to be accommodated. So it feels like just more efficient scheduling could help. The other thing I want to reiterate, what I said earlier, there is absolutely no science indicating that young children are more effectively learning in groups of 500. In fact, group, you know, our small elementary school kids are more effectively taught in groups of 10 to 20. As a college student, who goes to 500 student classes and it's very arguably called a college student extension. So the other thing is that I want to mention is the, not just the 135 trees, all the brush and vegetation loss to not just...